Today is Wednesday, October 5, 2016. My son's birthday. I called the meeting of Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Hawkins and myself, Callen, is present, and Commissioner Bloom is absent today. When we stand for silent meditation, I'd hope that they wouldn't keep... I knew him personally and been good friends with Darius Summers and his brother Dennis. If you don't know, Darius is one of our magistrates, longtime magistrate. Before that, he was longtime Bealiff and a good friend to the county. So if everyone can keep him and his entire family and friends of Dennis Summers in your prayers, I'd very much appreciate it. Well, everyone please rise for a moment. Silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Renata.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have eighteen exoneration listings this morning for $8,740.80. No minutes to approve. Vouchers, General County, 263-3246. Magistrate Court, $40. 911 Cash, 2066-10. Home confinement, 156. Chestnut Ridge Park, 1932-33. Camp Muffley, 851-51. Mason Dixon Park, 232-47. Reallocated coal, 5,000. Assessor's valuation, 2477-79. Teen Court, 11,493-90. Purchasing card vouchers for General County, 36,751-05. Magistrate Court, 4381. 911, 666-93. Home confinement, $6,026.48. Chestnut Ridge Park, 612-28. Mason Dixon Park, 311-32. Assessor's valuation, 151-38. For voucher total of 331-845-81. We have no budget revisions. Positions, vacancies for boards and authorities, Mon County Planning Commission and the Farmland Protection Board, and fiduciary orders of October 5, 2016.
Boo for approval.
Second, we have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, there was a submission of a motion. I'm just making note of this on the estate of Dawn Marie Kepi, Wes Nicholson. It's not on the agenda show. We won't deal with it today, but is there anyone present on this?
I'm Mr. Shire.
Okay. Would you mind stepping forward, identify yourself and your residence? And you have a few moments if you want to talk about the basis of your motion. It's not on the agenda, but we will vote on it next week. If you want to speak today, that's fine, too.
Absolutely. Mr. Shire, should I sit or stand?
It's up to you.
My name is Ryan Amina. I'm an associate attorney with the law firm of Cranston and Edwards here in Morgantown. Paul Cranston was retained to represent Ms. Nicholson following an incident where she was pedestrian and hit by a motor vehicle. She passed away unfortunately during the penancy of dealing with that. She did have a husband, but he was subsequently incarcerated during all of this, so he couldn't be the administrator. And she has a minor daughter. We're in the process of finalizing, pursuing that claim for her being hit by a vehicle. However, we have not been able to locate anyone that is either able or willing to serve as the administrator of that estate, and we would very much like to get any proceeds from that to her minor daughter. And we're just unable to move forward until we have an administrator appointed.
I understand. Do you have any questions?
No.
Very good. I don't think there'll be a problem. We will put this on the agenda for next week.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for coming in. Okay. All right. Do we have any introduction of new employees or personnel changes?
Nothing.
Okay. This is a period for comments from the public. If anybody wishes to rise and speak, identify your, state your name and residence, and you have three minutes. Anyone wish to speak?
Oh, can you stand?
Yes, sir.
I just want to state that we're, the Planning Commission and the NPO are officially downstairs, moved in, so anything that you guys need, we're right next door. So I want to say thanks to Bobby and his crew for getting us moved very easily. It was a smooth move, and we just got a couple of things left at our old office, but we're down here and good to go.
Yeah, nice offices, huh?
Yes, very nice.
Improved?
Very much so, yes.
Very good. Glad to have you. I'll stop down and visit you on a regular basis.
Absolutely. If everybody's happy.
Is everybody happy? Welcome to the neighborhood. I'm not Mr. Rogers, so I don't, I don't make it. I can't sell that well. Okay, thank you very much. Any more comments from the public? Okay, close that session. Colleen Toon, Grants.
I don't think she has anything. I don't have anything.
Nothing today?
Nothing today. It'll be next week.
Okay, great. Thank you. Keep that money flowing. Okay, Becca Flint Park, WVU Extension Agent 4H Youth Development, National 4H Week. Becca, good to see you.
How are you? Always a pleasure to see you.
Good to see you.
Come bearing gifts, of course.
Very good.
Okay, you know, I like to stand. Well, thank you for inviting me or letting me come and speak to you. You know, I always enjoy visiting with you all and talking about 4H, which is my favorite thing of all. So thank you, of course, for your continued support of the 4H program. In Montague County, I feel like we have come quite a way since I started with our numbers and our youth reach and our relationships, so thank you. I have a few things I'd like to tell you about, and I will come again once our final report is finished, but just a few numbers to tell you. So currently in 4H, we have 321 youth involved in 4H community clubs. We have ten clubs that meet monthly throughout the county, all over the county, so we have some on the western end as well as in town. We started a new club at Richdale Elementary last year and it's going strong, so we are always open to having more clubs being developed. We're working on a Cloverbud-specific club that's going to meet at the library, and that will hopefully begin soon. Cloverbud is our kindergarten through second graders. 4H membership is third grade through age 21. We have ninety-two 4H volunteers who are fully vetted. We had to do a background check system this year. That's new for us, but we were managed to get all of our volunteers through that process and training, so that was exciting. This summer, we had 335 campers that camped at Camp Muffley. Very proud of that number. When I started, there was a threat to put both camps together. We have an older camp, a younger camp residential, as well as a day camp for our youngest kids. Glad to see Rachel here. Rachel is wonderful. She's our camp manager at Camp Muffley, and we love working with her. She is dynamite. The campers had a great summer. It was a really wonderful summer of camp, so thank you for your support with our campers at 4H Camp Muffley. This summer, we had a busy fair season, so we had 139 4H projects exhibited at the Mon County Fair. We also exhibited fairs, exhibits at the Batel District Fair and Clay District Fair. So that number steadily grows. When I started, it was really difficult for people to get projects completed because we had nowhere to exhibit them, so it's wonderful to have a fair that we can show those projects off. This is 4H-specific. We do combine with FFA to sell our livestock animals, so that's another part of 4H. We do have kids involved in it. It is sort of a stereotype that 4Hs have to live on a farm, and that's something that I've really worked through in Montague County. But this year, at the show and sale, which is on the western end, both of you attended, we had twenty-one 4H animals sold. At the Mon County Fair, we had forty-nine 4H animals sold. Again, that's not the total. That doesn't include FFA, but a total of $164,824 was raised through those sales of livestock animals. So our kids are learning the important value of caring for an animal, raising it, and then marketing and selling that animal. Something that's, yeah, so that's good. Something that we, that you may not be aware of, I think that you both are aware of it, but something that we do throughout the school year is offer our programming to youth in the school system and after-school programs. So this is something that we developed this year to promote our 4H school enrichment programs. We had always gone to principals' meetings to promote our school programs, but this is a way that we decided it would be more effective, so we are targeting grades with programs. So I thought it would be important for you to see the kinds of things that we're teaching in the schools. Teachers love our programs, hands-on, free to them, and that's where we get the majority of our 4H youth numbers, is through our school enrichment programs. We're busy this week. With National 4H Week, we promote our science experiments, and so this year has to do with drones. And so right after this, in One Mile Park, to start teaching our drone discovery science experiment. I wanted to point out, too, something really exciting is our What's in a Flag program, and so we've taught that with two second grades, all the second grades that go sub crust primary and Mile Park, and the kids had never learned a fold of American flag. So they love it. The teachers love it. We bought a set of American flags to show the kids how to do it, and it's a wonderful program, and I'm really proud of that. What else can I say? We had Energy Express. You all are familiar with our Energy Express program. Sometimes people don't realize it's a 4H program. It's in the summer. We had it at three sites this year, so we added a site. Thirty-two students enrolled for the summer six-week program. We utilize college-aged AmeriCorps members to serve in that program, and the children improve their reading skills through their participation. So 4H is busy. We're going strong. There's still always room for improvement. If there wasn't, then I wouldn't be here, but we are excited about what we have done, and I'm excited to be serving in this role. I celebrate it eight years, which is hard to believe, and I remember coming here. I still have the wavering, shaky voice, but I know, Mr. Joy, you probably remember when I first came and how nervous I was, or Renata probably remembers, too. So I just, I just really appreciate the relationship with the county and how much you support 4H, so thank you. Happy National 4H Week.
Right, we appreciate that. To, as, you know, I always have to mention this, that when I was growing up, I thought it was hogs and hens and horses and...
You're a stereophobe.
Right, but that, but it isn't. It's hearts and hands and health and...
Head, heart, hands, and health.
Head, heart, hands, and health. I wanted that to be on the camera. Say that again.
Head, heart, hands, and health.
Right. And I also want to say that you've been there, I think, about the same time I've been here, and you've done an exceptional job, and you've really expanded the program, and your efforts are just so visible in the faces of the kids. I was so pleased to have that interaction, and I know Ed, he's with them all the time. You've been all your life for yourself, but...
Yes.
But I had that, see the faces of the children, that's tremendous. That speaks volumes for all the volunteers and for your effort, so we thank you for that.
Thank you. I would like to say a special thank you to all the volunteers. This is my 25th year, by the way. I do predate you just a little bit, but especially thanks to my parents. They started the club. Forrest and Ethel Mae Hawkins started the club and enrolled me in, at Easton back in 1957, I believe. That does date me just a little bit, but this has been a part of my life, still is a part of my life, and I thank you, as well as I said, all the volunteers who have been instrumental in molding the children and the adults that we have today. Thank you.
That's right, and the volunteers give an awful lot of time, and that's what I tell our 4H youth, is to be sure that they show appreciation for those volunteers because they're giving their time to make sure they have a good experience. So thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate it. I think that we have a wonderful program. Like I said, I'm very proud of it, and I wouldn't be, it wouldn't be so successful if it wasn't for the support of others, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board of Parks and Recreation Commissioners of Morgantown, Bow Park, intergovernmental partnership agreement, are they present?
Present.
Okay, if you all, why don't you come on up. You can stand or you can sit.
I will sit.
Okay. And just identify, identify yourself for the camera.
My name is Melissa Birch. I'm the executive director of Bow Park.
Ron Justice from WVU.
Okay. We had a work session to start this, and I think we got a good program lined up, so I'm going to turn it over to you and Melissa.
Yes, I think we talked in the work session about engaging in funding partnerships and also extending partnerships for programming specifically for our citizens of the city, county, and region, and extending those partnerships outward. I talked about riverfront revitalization, which I think is a very important subject today, and we are, we are hoping to move forward with, with this partnership. Of course, we will, we will take it to our board, and I'm fairly confident that we can move forward and work together, and very excited about programming the waterfront and Hazel Rude and McQuain Park specifically for this coming season.
Ron?
And I'm here representing WVU, and first and foremost, thank you all for your leadership and foresight to call us to a work session to say, you know, what can we do? What's the next thing we can do to work together on? And I think this is a really great opportunity with the riverfront park and programming and just a good example, again, of how if we bring people together, we can have success. And we certainly appreciate President Callen, your leadership, and President, or Commissioner Hawkins, your leadership, and Commissioner Bloom's leadership on having the foresight to bring this together, because it was at your urging that we come and do this. So my role today at WVU, from WVU, is that as we have been successful in other agreements, such as the collaboration on the ballpark, and we've worked together on Mile and Park and many other things, that you ask us to put together a draft collaboration agreement, which we have before you today, for your consideration. And again, just as Melissa said, she'll take that back to her board. She's confident to get engagement there. We will also take that back to WVU and specifically the College of Creative Arts to join into this part of partnership to see how we can increase programming opportunities and cultural opportunities and economic development opportunities along the riverfront and specifically in Hazel Rude and McQuain Park. And so I want to give a big thanks to Rossick Wiles. He helped draft this, this agreement, and we'd anticipated being here in another week, but he did quick work and quick turnaround. And just from a, I guess, broad sense, what the agreement basically states is that we'll agree to work together, to look in at many opportunities that we will have, and this agreement calls for us to put together representatives of the county commission, Bow Park, and the university to explore ways that we can seek opportunities for riverfront park as well as how we can work together to identify programming opportunities and other activities that could just enhance that. So we'll take that back to WVU once you all have looked at it and get the appropriate signatures on that to begin to sit down and work together in a working group, just as we did with the ballpark, so.
Very good. Yeah, I want to emphasize that this is just the first step in our larger vision that I've talked about, and Bow Park's a key, a key player, both with the Mon River trails and Hazel Rude. I want to emphasize that this is just a single step in an overall vision that we've been working with UMBRA. I've been blessed to be designated by this commission to work with the Corps of Engineers and the Upper Monongahela River Association to develop commerce but also develop recreation. And I pointed out, I believe it was last week, that Senator Capito and Congressman McKinley had upon a conference call in our early stage put in an amendment that, that other factors other than just the number of bar, commercial barges that goes through the locks would be taken into consideration, one of which sets right here, what you're talking about, and that is, that's the community cultural connection and the recreational part of the river. And Ron Snyder's here, and Ron knows that I've been, I've been offering to work with Grandville. Grandville's a key part. They have the best riverfront properties, and I want to work with them. I got this vision of an additional rail trail on the other side and a walking bridge connection. Ron's shaking his head. He's heard me say it many times, that will connect. And we've talked with Marion County. I've talked with the Marion County. We want to be able to eventually be able to walk from Palatine Park, and which can now, not only down to the Van Vorish in that area, but also be able to put in a, a walking bridge across the river. And when I was with the Corps of Engineers a couple of weeks ago with Frank Gernasic and Barry Palet, I specifically talked to them about how, what, what steps we could use, and they were, they were very much in favor of the kind of programming and advancements we're going to make for the river. And I want to go over to Riverside Park there at Grandville, and that's where you get to the walking trails. And there's, there's an old, a lot of people aren't aware of this, but there's a railroad that used to go all the way to Wadestown. And the Railroad Corporation by federal act always maintains the right of way. I may not see it in my lifetime, but I want to create a walking trail all the way to Wadestown. We'll get there. And I also want my tram, Ron, we're going to go for, we're going to have a tram from the Riverview Park and right up to the ballpark, where you'll be able to go right on the, the, you could walk, walk from Palatine Park in Fairmont or ride your bicycle, stop there at Grandville, get on the tram, go watch a ball, a ball game, come back down to Grandville, have something to eat, get on your bike and ride, ride back up the trail. That's my vision. And this is just the first step in that, that much larger vision. And I know it's possible, and I also know that Bow Park is key. And the last thing I want to say before I turn over to Commissioner Hawkins is that we, we here have always focused, this commission have always focused on leveraging our money, and that's what this is all about. We're going to, we're going to try to leverage funds to get additional funds to benefit all the citizens of the county. And, and I want to thank Bow Park, the Bow Park Board, and I know not only you represent WVU, but you're also heavily involved in Bow Park, Ron, that it is so important that we do collaborate and we work to extend and maximize the monies that we can bring in for, for the various programs. So I want to personally thank you for, for that. Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes, I'm just happy that our invitation to come to the work session has led to this. I really think that, first of all, I hope that that's going to be a biking trail to Wadestown and not a walking trail to Wadestown, but...
My plan, bike and walk.
But when I, when I, when I took office a year and a half ago, this is the very spirit of the thing that I hoped that this commission would be able to achieve, and this is just a great day as far as I'm concerned. I really looked forward to having something like this happen, so, especially when it's Hazel Rude and McQuain Park. I, I knew Mrs. Ruby. She was a friend of mine. Dad built her house, and so I got to spend many hours with her, and I can't help but think that she's smiling right now, saying, okay, you're headed in the right direction.
Well, with that said, just to follow up, the, the foundation has been so great to our community, and that's just another great thing that they've given us an opportunity to enjoy, so we share your, your thoughts on that as well. What we'd like to propose to you then is that as we go back to our respective bodies and get, get the approvals, which I agree with Melissa, I think this is a no-brainer for us to continue to work on projects together that maybe in a week or so, we could come back and have an official signing here and even do it, but we can start moving ahead, knowing what's in the document, and certainly to work together on, on identifying these issues.
Could I have a motion to continue with collaboration agreement?
Yes.
For finalization of signature?
Move to continue this collaboration agreement, hopefully next week for the finalization with the signatures.
I'll second that. I have a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Which is the start of something great.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
That's a line from Casablanca, you know.
I know. Okay. All right. Thomas Amon, Steptoe and Johnson, PLLC, to consider for adoption of bond authorizing resolution and order which would authorize, you can come on up and start sitting down, which would authorize the issuance by the county commission of its not more than $6 million aggregate principal amount of tax increment revenue and refunding bonds, Series 2016-C, Development District Number Three, Maple Drive Improvement Project, for the purposes of refunding the county commission's outstanding Series 2011-A property tax increment revenue bonds, paying cost of the design, acquisition, construction, and equipment of project plan number two for Montague County Development District Number Three, and paying the cost of issuance of such bonds, approving the execution and delivery of the documents necessary for the issuance of the Series 2016-C bonds by the county commission, approving the requisition of proceeds of the bonds and related matters. That's the subject, and Tom, you're on.
Well, that was very, I know that was very clear and concise.
Right to the point. So you don't think you need to explain it?
No, I think it speaks for itself.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Go ahead and explain it anyway.
Sure. Tom Amon with Steptoe and Johnson, and we're bond counsel to the county commission for tax increment revenue bonds for improvements to Maple Drive. So hopefully, we have, we have a packet here of some information to go over and go through, but where we are just overall is the county commission had previously adopted a reimbursement resolution with respect to this. Well, first of all, we have, we had a prior project plan for improvements to Mon General We have, we had issued bonds, the county commission, to execute that plan and build a new roadway leading up to Mon General Hospital, so that has been completed. That project is wrapped up. Payments are being made on those bonds. Subsequent to that, a, Mon General had a proposal. They were building some medical office buildings in the same general area but adjacent to Maple Drive. A lot of problems with that roadway that I'm sure you all are aware of, and also as an effort to sort of take some traffic off at that intersection and provide another outlet, an inlet to that area. Improvements to Maple Drive were proposed and to utilize the TIF program to finance those costs. So we had a, a project plan for that, that the county had approved, submitted to the development office, which was approved by the development office, and now we are sort of executing on that plan. The NPO had endorsed this effort to improve that road, submitted a letter of endorsement. We are out to bid on, actually, we've opened bids on that project. Construction is progressing. We're now to the point where the county had adopted a reimbursement resolution to approve that there were costs incurred relating to the project before bonds were issued to reimburse those costs when, you know, when we then follow up and issue the bonds. So bids have been opened. Construction is progressing. Costs are being incurred, being paid by Mon General, so we're now to the point where we're ready, have everything in place to issue the TIF bonds. An initial requisition would be made to reimburse Mon General for costs that have been incurred up to this point and paying the contractors on that project. It's a publicly bid project, so we're, you know, we're in compliance with all the, the TIF Act requirements there. So what we have is similar to what was done in 2011. These bonds would be privately placed with Mon General as the developer, so there's no placement with a bank or other financial institution, so, you know, they're assuming the risk of future payments on the, the TIF bonds and that the revenues will be sufficient for that. So no risk to the county commission in that respect. Uh, so no risk to the county commission in that respect. Um, so just to go over, just broad brush, there's a transaction summary. Um, it's $5,153,000 in TIF bonds. Uh, we would be closing, uh, tomorrow with actually funding the repayment of those 2011 bonds and then financing the new project. Um, Mond General, Montague County General Hospital Company is the developer for the project. Uh, you'll see the other parties involved. Uh, Piper Jaffray here with Joe Nassif as the placement agent for the county commission and placing these bonds with the hospital company. Um, this is a, uh... We're repaying the 2011 bonds in full.
That's the A TIF bond.
Yes. We are providing for $2,500,000 and new money available through these bonds to pay for the improvements to Maple Drive. And we're paying the, the cost of issuance or the closing costs. Uh, just mechanically, uh, Mond General is going to be tendering the 11 bonds in exchange for the, the new bonds, so they're not having to produce monies at the closing table to cover that portion of it. Um, so you'll see that reflected in the sources and uses as to what we're doing. Uh, the security, it's purely repayable through the tax increment revenues, uh, as we have done on your other deals. Uh, there's no real estate collateral security. The county commission has no repayment obligation beyond what's available through the TIF revenues to pay these bonds. Uh, they're, for optional redemption, they're prepayable at any time without penalty. Um, mandatory redemption, um, we have scheduled interest payments for the accrued interest. If there are TIF revenues available above and beyond that, they would be used to pay down the principal of the bonds. Um, so that will help get those paid off early if the TIF revenues are there to do that in advance of the 20, is it 2038? I think it's at June 1, 2038.
That's the maturity.
Maturity date. Um, so we have a, based upon the, uh, projected TIF revenues for this district, the bonds are projected to pay off a little early at that 2038 with June 1, 2031, if the development that's contemplated. Uh, you can see, under property tax increment, we have, uh, what's in place currently, uh, the certified assessed values, uh, our base of 81, our July 1, 15 certified values of 115 million. So we've already got a nice increment there of $34 million. Uh, I'm sorry, incremental assessed value, of course, uh, which was producing that property tax increment of 368,000 right now. Uh, and then based on what's the, the development that is, has either completed construction and is awaiting full assessment or is under construction, you can see some additional certified values that are projected to come online in the next couple of years, building our increment from 368 to 472 to 566. So that's why we're able to finance these additional improvements. Um, that's our existing TIF district, you can see there, no changes to the district. Uh, our original project plan, as I described, for the Mond General Drive improvements than our new project plan for Maple Drive. Um, and that is the transaction summary.
Do we have a new completion date on that road? I know it was delayed a little bit because of utilities.
I believe that they're looking at February, January, February of 2017. So it's a, it's a short construction period.
Yeah, I knew from talking to Daryl that, uh, Daryl, that I guess there was some utility situations. What I find interesting on these projects is it costs, uh, more to move, uh, move the utilities around than it does to build the road.
That's right.
Repeatedly, not one project after another, so...
You'll see on page three of our numbers that Joe has kindly put together for us, uh, the drawdown schedule for these bonds showing, um, what Mond General is projected to take down on the 2.5 million. And it provides roughly 750,000 monthly and a full drawdown by February 1 of 2017 to pay the remaining costs on the project.
So we're actually ahead of schedule.
Yep. So that's, is there...
Yeah, the only thing I think good would be, uh, the interest rate. We've, uh, fixed that at, uh, 5%, so there's no, no risk in terms of upward or downward. And then just to note that the bonds would only accrue interest as they are, are requisitioning and drawing their monies off the bond. Um, and that, um, uh, maybe, maybe two years from now, to extend interest rate, we can get a better interest rate at a, at a bank and all the, the current construction is completed and adequate coverage and security. Only then would we, would we seek to refinance those bonds with a local bank. But in the meantime, um, good rate, quick payoff, there, uh, all annual surpluses must be used to pay those bonds off as soon as possible. And we have no speculative development in the sense that, uh, as Tom has said, everything's either been completed or under construction. Um, and so the real risk would just be the assessment risk if it was assessed for less than what was anticipated. But there's plenty of, um, uh, coverage, adequate revenues in the event that we have.
They're gonna have half a million there anyway.
We should, yeah, should be very, very healthy. And the only thing I was gonna point out was just the, I always like to go back, but, um, 2008, we established that district. This goes, and this is really more to toot the county's horn. Um, but you all approved that district in the first project plan in 2008. We issued the first series of bonds in 2011. We came back in 2015 to do the second project plan. And that was to further improve the emergency access road improvements. And here we are in 2016, you know, continuing forward. So altogether, um, roughly $5 million worth of, of good roadway infrastructure improvements that otherwise would not have been financed.
And that is an area that, that, uh, it, it has really caused the area to boom.
Correct.
A lot of, a lot of new, uh, uh, retail as well as professional office buildings and medical facilities and... That's what TIFs are for, to create those opportunities that wouldn't exist. But, but we're taking care of the public, uh, the public services that, uh, were governments responsible to provide. That's good.
So just procedurally, it would be, what's before the commission for approval is a bond authorizing order, which authorizes the issuance of TIF bonds at an amount not more than 6 million. I think we're at $5,153,000 would be the actual issue amount to pay off those 2011 bonds, finance the 2.5 million of additional construction and pay the closing costs and approve the basic forms of the transaction documents, which are in form before you, uh, trust indenture, development agreement, bond purchase agreement, and our transaction summary that I went over, and the execution and delivery of those documents by the president of the commission, um, and to close on the issuance of the bonds. Um, also approving a cost of issuance requisition to pay the closing costs. The hospital, as I said, has incurred about $258,000 of project-related costs up to this point, but they're gonna do a project fund.
You want all this done in one motion or you want it done in separate motions?
It's gonna be one motion.
Okay, you got it down, Ed?
Yeah, I, I, yes, I, I...
Keep going, Tom.
So I, I can actually propose the motion for you. But, um, and the cost of issuance to pay the, but a project fund requisition would come after closing to reimburse them for the 258, but so be expecting that probably and maybe at the beginning of next month.
Well, we'll do the closings, uh, we scheduled for what, 12:30?
12, 12:30, whenever you guys can get over, we're gonna have some nice little sandwiches for you.
I got my signing hammer there.
All right.
You ought to see this, if you haven't seen it, you ought to see this. They don't do, no, I'm telling everyone else here. Man, you ought to come over and just take a picture of the, the files. We got like 100 files all lined up in a row and two rows of them. And Tom and, uh, I'm sorry, Jason, thank you. Uh, they got them all lined up and, and I'm just standing there and Carrie's, uh, signing too. We're just there, lay it out, here's one, here's two, it's like two and a half hours of signing.
Plus she's got, Carrie's got to do the seal.
Yeah, she's in the sign, at the sign, she's gotta do the seal, so. It, it's something to, to view, but go ahead, Tom.
So it's, it's a motion to, uh, adopt the bond authorizing resolution and order of the Montague County Commission for the issuance of not more than $6 million in tax increment revenue bonds.
Thank you, that's an excellent statement. I think it's a great example of preparedness and planning. And would like to move that the motion as stated, Mr. Amon, uh, be accepted, okay?
And I'll second that motion, I have a motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passed, thank you. Okay, so, uh, 12, 12:30, we'll be over there to sign away. Okay, thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
So we, we were coming a long way, we just came from the West Virginia Association of Counties. Uh, and, uh, the, uh... The, uh, discussion, uh, always seems to revolve around, well, Montague County is doing this, Montague County is doing this, Montague County is doing this. And I keep telling them, you, we can duplicate it, we can duplicate, it can be copied. And that's, that's why I'm so, so active in, in building, uh... Because Montague County can't keep succeeding if the rest of the state doesn't start succeeding. So we've got to work to, to duplicate this in other counties. And we, by the Bow Park Agreement today, it's a prime example of, uh, of counties. Uh, Fayette County is part of that plan, uh, with Point Marion and, and Marion County. So, uh, I just want to thank you for all your work, y'all do a very good job, very much appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. Good to do it without you guys being in support of it, so we appreciate your efforts as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, okay, correspondence, Renata?
That was a nice lead-in, by the way, to correspondence, that's what you just said.
Oh, yeah, okay. National Association of Counties Newsletter, recognition of master facilitation agreement with West Virginia University.
Do I have to read it?
Yes.
Uh, Montague County will receive payments generated by West Virginia University's leasing of tax-exempt properties to businesses. The payments will come from, from the increased cost in the lease agreements with WVU. The county tax assessor will survey the space used for commercial purposes and set the payment at 60% of the appraised amount for the space. That could total 175,000 annually from one particular commercial area. No other county and state institution has entered any sort of agreement that I've ever heard of. County Commission President Eldon Callen told Metro News. That was in the, uh, National Association of Counties County News Newsletter for September 19th.
This newsletter is sent all over the, all over the world, actually, and, and they have, uh, I have talked to people there and, and there is no other agreement, but other, other counties have already, uh, throughout the United States have already talked about copying this agreement with other university towns, so that's very good.
It's good to see that we have such great leadership, thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, thank you, Ed. Uh, any further correspondence?
I do have one thing that came in, um, while I was away at the Association of Counties. Um, we have a requisition, it would be number three, from the, to the state auditor's office for a drawdown, um, of 170,823,12 for the special excise tax district for the University Town Center Economic Development District. So this is, uh...
It's a payoff amount?
Yes.
Well, not payoff or...
Pay to.
Pay to amount.
Yes.
Okay, move, move to allow the sprawl out there.
Uh, second, we have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Where we keep coming ahead scheduled, that's, that's why they keep referring to Montague County. Okay, any other correspondence?
No.
Okay, thank you. Unfinished business, to consider the donation of a log cabin made to Mason Dixon Historical Park. JR and Mr. Doyle, you're, you're on.
I'm not stand, but the soup de jour today is to sit down, so we'll, we'll sit down.
All right.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
So on September 29th, I had the pleasure of having our first advisory board meeting. And we had, uh, we have three separate recommendations, all dealing with the log cabin. And I will just read them from my recommendation letter, if you would. Um, the Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board and I Superintendent would like to make the following recommendations to the Montague County Commission. Accept the donation of log cabin located currently on Route 119, Grafton Road, Goshen Road, the cabin in question, and to be placed on the borders of, within the borders of Mason Dixon Historical Park. We also propose that said cabin be placed on the park's property adjacent to the existing cabins, whereas the donated cabin will be placed on a cement pad and renovated, bringing the cabin to a usable and rentable condition. That is recommendation number one from the board. Uh, number two, the Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Board and I also wish to renovate on renovations on the two existing cabins to bring them to a rentable condition, um, allowing us to rent all three cabins by late summer of 2017. These renovations will allow all three cabins to become an income, income source for the park and an asset to the park and its community. And third and final recommendation, uh, finally, the Mason Dixon Historical Advisory Board and I propose the park's office be moved to inside the barn, the existing barn on the property, and the construction be updated by Bobby Doyle's, um, county work crews to add four feet to the existing park office. And those are our three recommendations.
Recommendation. Uh, the, uh, one, one of the issues was the financial savings.
Correct.
But I know the other issue that was important, uh, was that, that they... The overall or future vision of the Mason Dixon Historical Park calls for the placement of, of these cabins, log cabins, not only preserve the history, uh, but, but also to fit in to a future plan that the advisory committee and you are working on.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to add that. Uh, discussion, Commissioner Hawkins?
Oh, I have no discussion. Uh, I think that this is a excellent, uh, recommendation, uh, an excellent course that this board has already decided to act upon. And I would like to move that we accept all three recommendations, yes.
I'm sorry, um, last week you stated that if Tom had any questions, he...
Yeah, well, he, he needs to finish the motion.
I'm sorry.
He hasn't finished the motion.
I'm sorry.
He's trying to make the motion. And then we'll have discussion.
That we would accept all three of the recommendations as proposed by the advisory board. I feel this is an excellent direction that this park is taking. Uh, I look forward to actually generating more income, uh, with this proposal.
Thanks, George.
And I'll second that motion for discussion.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, no problem, we don't get stuck tight here.
Tom had sent me a couple of questions, uh, late last, late yesterday afternoon. Um, he asked that, he wanted to know where, let me just read this.
Just, then JR and Bobby can respond.
Um, he wanted me to ask, um, what line item was the move going to be paid from? And do we have a contract or a liability? He says contract slash liability, and I'm not exactly sure what that means.
Uh, it'll be paid out of 425, probably, uh, 458 capital outlay improvements. And we won't have no liability on, if that's moving the structure because we're contracting that, so that's his liability.
Also, I got a, uh, an email yesterday, uh, from David Kramer at DOH. Uh, they, uh, uh, he was very excited. He told me that Mercer County has preserved a log cabin very much the same way. He, he's, Dave Kramer's Department of Highway, he's a good friend of ours. Uh, and he's, he's, uh, he said that they wouldn't have any problem getting all the necessary permits, so that, that's not a problem either, so...
He also wanted to know if... He also wanted to know if we can reimburse the general county fund from extra coal severance revenue for a future, but I can answer that, you can't.
There you can.
I mean, you can transfer funds from one to the other, but it's really not necessary.
Right, that's, that's just budgeting, knowing where you can move stuff. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Actually, actually, Bobby, you, you, the, the amount for, for this recommendation is substantially less than the amounts quoted before. Do you have estimates?
Well, it's, it's $8,500 to move the, the log cabin back to Mason Dixon, and the office is almost completely built already, so hopefully you'll approve this, so, so we're gonna have about $1,000 in it and build that office. And then the concrete and the roof, I'm, I'm just guessing, we'll probably, you know, max we'll have $20,000 in moving everything compared to the $40,000 estimate I heard the last time. If everything goes well, I, I think that maybe we'll look at next year putting another set of restrooms up there so we can utilize these cabins, and, I mean, we've had the other two for a while now, and they haven't been used, they haven't been, maybe we have to put a little road up the side there toward the woods area right there, and, I mean, I think it can really make a go of having all three of these up into one area. If we would have put it at the end of the driveway like you were talking about, I mean, it's, it's there for life because you gotta run all your utilities and everything there, so it's not a movable item.
Right. Well, I, I think this is, this is a very good utilization of an historical building. And actually, the project as laid out will, will gain more for less cost than buying a new steel building, so, you know, I, I, I think it's very logical and.
I, I think it's a great plan. I'd toot that in, too. I would like to also thank Patty Fisher, her late husband Bobby Fisher, for this generous donation through the Historical Society, for which we're working to go ahead and give them a, you know, a, a tax donation slip, but then the Historical Society is donating this then to County Commission.
Please pass along the park's thanks as well.
I, I think it's a great, again, a great collaborative effort, you know, between all these, all these bodies.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, well, let's deal with this motion first. We have a motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Pursuant to that, I do have the contract that I would move that you'll be allowed to sign with Snyder Excavating to actually move the cabin.
Yeah, I reviewed the contract, and it's very straightforward.
And Mr. Doyle has reviewed it as well.
Right. I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. You got that. I'd also like to suggest that we send a letter of thanks and appreciation to the Fishers and to the Mason Dixon Historical Park from the commission, if you'd make that motion.
I would love to send a, make the motion that we send this set letters. Thanks.
Second, I have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. JR, you got anything else for us?
I do. I actually do have one quick thing on a personal note. I started this project before I was an employee with the county, and, and I must admit, there was definitely some, some opinions on this cabin matter. And I came into this position thinking, you know, these gentlemen will never agree on this, you know? How is this going to work? And I thank you for showing me that what democracy really is. We came to a mutual agreement between all three commissioners, and we, everybody's happy, so, thank you very much. Now I'm actually employee, so I just.
Yeah, you're an employee.
Thank you very much, Ed.
Thank you. We appreciate your work, and, and we appreciate the work of the advisory committee. I'm very excited about that, about that committee. It was, I sat there as an ex officio and answered questions, but pretty much just listened, and from the plans for the 250th to Green County and other visions, and the possibility of getting a grant to upgrade and have cultural events out there, there's a lot of excitement in Mason Dixon. I think we're, we're off to a great start. Thank you. Okay, did you want to say anything more?
No.
Okay. New, new business, no, no more unfinished business? New business. Consideration of lease agreement with the Montague County Board of Health for fleet vehicles. You just want to briefly explain this.
Well, it was a question on insurance. The, of course, the county health department, we carry the liability policy for the health department, and in order for us to be able to insure their vehicles, the insurance company suggested that we enter into a lease agreement with the health department so that it can be clearly stated what the rules are and that we will carry the insurance. And we just have that agreement in lease, but Dr. Smith has already signed it, and I'm just waiting for your approval.
Yeah, the health department, of course, the agency of the county, county has a number of agencies, and people don't necessarily know the relationship. The county health department is, is one of the county's agencies, and as such, we provide an overall policy for them. And this has brought up a number of issues to make sure that, that our liability insurance covers, covers our vehicles and, and any, preferably none, but any mishaps that might occur, so.
Move to allow the president to sign this lease agreement.
Now, second, I have a motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. To consider setting the term expiration dates for the members appointed to the Mason Dixon Historical Park and Camp Muffley Advisory Boards, I would suggest, I, I, I never liked the situation where board members go off all at once, because then you don't have the historical knowledge that's developed. I would suggest we just hold a lottery, throw the names in a hat, one, two, three.
Well, I.
Or do you have a better idea?
Well, I, I just did them in alphabetical order. We did one expire 9/28 of 17, two on 9/28 of 18, and three on 9/28 of 19, and I just did the names in alphabetical order. So Amy Blake would be 9/28/17 for Camp Muffley. Then we have Dan Cheslock for 18, Daryl Fox for 18, Randy Moore for 19, Alex Rubenstein for 19, and Vicky Tricker for 19, those are all Camp Muffley. Mason Dixon, also 9/28/17, Charles Kraft, 9/28/18, Ethan Moore, then Louis Statler, 19 is Betty Wiley, and also 19 is Pizza Packer.
Move to adopt the proposal as stated by Renata for the expiration dates for the members appointed to both parks.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I will get the letters prepared and get those sent out.
Okay, very good. And of course, we got, anyone interested in applying for Chestnut Ridge Park can also apply for that, that board as well. Reports from elected officials. Ron, you have anything?
Yes, Ron, Ed.
Kerry, you have anything for us there?
Yes.
Okay. Reports from county commissioners, Ed?
Yes, I did attend. Last Wednesday, the state had a sponsored grant writing class, so I did attend that. Very informative. I did bring the information back. Yesterday was the PACE Awards Dinner. I did represent commission at this particular event. You know, there's nothing more telling to find that something that has grown to such a wonderful business model creation that simply started out of a mother's love. This is really, you know, I, I know all about PACE because I've watched it evolve through the years. This is really a great thing, starting there in Star City, if I recall correctly, so, everybody should be proud. I think everybody had a good day yesterday. I should announce that, this is a yes, Harrison County said yes to the request that we have sent out, it was actually in my third month here, that the commissioners from the adjoining counties of Harrison and Marion, Preston, and Taylor tried to meet to strengthen the resolve that we have to work to further our cause down in Charleston as North Central. We've also sent this out to Wetzel, so, but having four members respond in a positive, I think that we are set now to begin meeting and seeing what we can do to further this cause. And lastly, there is an arts walk in downtown Morgantown this Friday. I would encourage everybody to come out and enjoy the community. This is a great event that has grown each and every year, so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the, the more we, the more we collaborate, the better we are, we all are. I want to, a couple, just a couple of quick things. The MPO Tiger Grant for the Dwayne Grimbons Island received the highly recommended. There was 500, 579 grant applications, oh, excuse me. There were grant applications including 500, 579 billion dollars worth of requests, and they only had 400, 450 million to distribute. There were 200 and some that were highly recommended projects. The Secretary of Transportation and the Tiger Grant then selected the ones to fill out the 400 and some dollar, 400 and some million dollars. We, they do have a post conference with the people in the DOH, the, the federal transportation department, and Bill Austin and I were on that conference call last week. They, they said our, our program, our application was, was excellent, it was highly recommended, it was, that's the highest recommendation you can get, but we just weren't selected. And so we'll try again next year and see how, see how the, what, what effects the election has to either expand the, the Tiger Grant money, but we will, we will continue to, to strive. I know there were three Tiger Grant applications, and I can't remember what all of them there were. We went to the, Renata and Colleen and I went to the West Virginia Association of Counties Board Meeting and Legislative Conference in preparation for adopting the legislative priorities for all the, the office holders, elected office holders in the county, there's six of them. A lot of people don't realize, we got 169 county commissioners, and we got 144 elected, which includes the county commissioner, 444 elected county officials, so the, it's very important, and so many have issues, clerks, prosecutors and all. They were all represented, and we put together a packet of legislative priorities that will be published and be coming out shortly, and will be, certainly be a subject matter for our region.
Yes.
To regional meetings. I want to thank you for, for your efforts to keep pulling those people in. We, I've got to, I'm going to, I have to go to Charleston tomorrow, it was sort of last minute thing for executive committee meeting on some of the changes that, that are, are being proposed, so, but I'll be, I'll be back tomorrow evening for the farm deal, so I look forward to that, and I think that's pretty much my report for right now. Do we have anything else? Yes, Bobby?
I guess you already know that we've moved everybody from the airport down to here. We're finishing up getting some of the surplus stuff that we have up there, and we're gonna put everything over in the old recycle building from probation and everywhere, and then we're gonna advertise and have a surplus auction sale there. Also, I, I really think it's a, it's a great thing that everybody agreed after, I contacted all the commissioners after our meeting, and everybody was happy, I was putting the cabin to where it's going out there at Mason Dixon. And at last, I will be on vacation from today, after the meeting, after today, till next Wednesday. I was supposed to be off next Wednesday, but we already have scheduled with meals, so I'll be back, and then I'll be off till the following Tuesday, and I'll be back Wednesday.
Thank you.
But we are gonna get, I already talked to Carlos a little bit ago, we're all gonna get moving, and we'd like to do some measuring at that cabin, if we could get into it, if you'd give us a key?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Enjoy your vacation.
Move to adjourn.
Second, we are adjourned. Thank you.